Roll call.
Mr. Sullivan?
Present.
Mr. Parentano?
Present.
Mr. Allen?
Present.
Mrs. Bowman? Mrs. Boyle is absent with prior notice. Mr. Feather?
Here.
Mrs. Hollenbeck is absent with prior notice. Mr. Kervitz?
Here.
Mr. Merrington?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Board met in executive session this evening prior to this meeting to discuss matters of employment, issues related to labor relations, the purchase or lease of real property, matters related to litigation, and school safety and security. The district mission statement, "The Nishamani community builds futures by empowering each child to become a productive citizen and a lifelong learner." Mrs. Burns, any announcements?
No announcements.
Thank you. Mr. Jones, superintendent's report.
Good evening, Happy New Year, everyone. Welcome to 2019. Many of us remember the Y-2K. We were talking about that just a little while ago. It's 19 years already past that timeframe. I would like to start off by making sure that I pause here with you, all of you, to take a moment to give thanks and recognize the hard work of our school directors. January is set aside here in Pennsylvania as School Director Recognition Month. Our school directors volunteer significant time on behalf of the community to do right by taxpayers and by students. And they do phenomenal work. They give time, dedicated time that they know they're going to give, and then on-call at all times as well when needed. And so I want to thank, we have a very active, involved, and collaborative board. I want to thank all of them, and I'd like you to join me, please, in thanking them for their volunteer efforts. They don't know oftentimes when they run for these offices what they're actually getting into. But you know, you learn a lot serving on a board like this, and it is a very awesome responsibility in terms of... I went and I visited Hoover Elementary School. I'm spending a day out in each of our schools. And so last week I was at Hoover and Fertabar. And at Hoover, Dr. Glenn had said, "The superintendent's visiting today," and says he likes math. Ask him to ask you a math question, and ask him why he likes, what he would do if he had $180 million. Now, some people on the board are chuckling because they know why, Dr. G said. Ask him what he would do if he had $180 million. And when I told the little guys who would ask those questions, "Mr. Jones, what would you do if you had $180?" They'd ask me. Dr. G said, "180 million dollars because..." Do you know that's how much this... This is what I would tell the students, but adults were listening. That's how much the school district spends every year to educate Nishamani students. You got volunteer members of the community get together to help guide and support that effort and make the decisions for this community. So again, I'm going on and on, but I do thank them all for their time. It's very, very important work. I have listed in my superintendent's report that's attached to Board Docs, three grants that the district received. A $10,000 grant from Today Incorporated, a $10,000 grant that actually went to the Nishamani Education Foundation but will find its way into classrooms that came from the Forst Foundation, a charitable foundation associated with Lincoln Investment, and a $5,500 check from TruMark Financial. Related to a Kiss the Pig competition Mr. Devlin might have had some involvement with, and we thank him for that, and that's for financial literacy. And so that was a nice opportunity for us to gain some more dollars to work with our kids to help our programs. An enrollment report for January, actually December's attached to this January. I want to point out that in our first meeting of the month, we always recognize the fact that we have new artwork in our room here, and for this month, this is Towanka Elementary students on display. And our new teacher there, Katie Hauser, we thank her and we thank them for giving us some additional color and excitement here into the halls, the walls. There's a State of the Schools Pennsylvania Report that's been around now for three years. It's attached to the superintendent's report. There's some interesting Pennsylvania information there you can find, and it may be worth your while to peruse that if you're interested in that. We have We Build Future Awards that we provide to people in the district who are doing good work in support of the school district's mission, are helping us accomplish our district's strategic plan. And so last month, Denise Bushman, health aide, who received her award as she was retiring, we thanked her. But also last month, Ms. Crowback, the secretary at Herbert Hoover, Principal Kelly from Carl Sandberg, Shirley Noth, phenomenal IT support person here for the district, and Tiffany Owens, special ed teacher and added teacher at Pequest. And we're all recipients of that award. We congratulate them. There's a call-out for people who are interested in helping us with our STEAM Expo. It's an annual event. It's really big here. It happens in the spring. The date that's in the report here is going to change a little bit, but the call for people who want to support and help us is there. So you can reach out to Mr. Jeanette, and his email address is there. We're doing some interesting things on diversity and culture that are highlighted here at Buck Elementary School and Fertabar. There's a phenomenal mural at the Schweitzer School in the library, brand-new, looks phenomenal. There's a picture of it in the report. We congratulate 43 Nishamani FBLA students, high school students who qualified to move on from regional competition to the state level, and they'll be competing in Hershey in April. And the Carl Sandberg Middle School spent some time at the local Starbucks because the art teacher there has a nice relationship where they post artwork there at the Starbucks. And so they, I guess, bought some hot chocolate and had some treats, but more importantly, they saw their artwork on display for the public, which was kind of nice as well. So we congratulate everyone, and we're off to a good start here in 2019. We do have a couple of presentations. You want me to move in, or...
Okay. This month, we have the CNI semi-annual report on Board Docs, so if you want to see what's going on in the curriculum and instructional department, you can look at it on Board Docs. Now, presentations.
We have two presentations, and at first, I'd like to recognize the fact that we have three teachers from Maple Point in attendance with us this evening. Ms. Schmidt, Ms. Reed, and Mrs. Foley, I believe all three of you are in attendance. They often are, and if not all three, one is here when they come before us about Veterans' Day program, the annual Veterans' Day program. And our connection to history here at Maple Point runs deep, and this is a program that they spotlight as well. Ladies, I believe, are we having representatives from the VFW first? Mrs. Foley, are you coming up first? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Carol Foley, and I'd like to introduce Mr. Tom Hauserman and his colleagues from the VFW 6393. They run an annual Patriots' Pen Competition, and our children enter it each year. And this year, we had two winners. They will be reading their essays in just a few moments, but the men can do a better job explaining the competition. So I'll hand it over to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Can everybody hear me?
Tom, if you could come up to the microphone for the...
Is this safe to stand?
It is, actually, but I'll go through it.
Whatever.
And in conclusion, no. My name is Tom Hauserman, and I'd like to first introduce my colleagues that are with me this evening. First, Russ Davidson. He is the commander for the VFW Post 6393. Russ. And next to Russ is Mike Silby. He is also the, as a member of the committee that judged the essays, he is also the officer of the day for our post. Terry Shirk, who is also, he and his wife are also members of the committee. There's just more than, we have members of the VFW and members of the auxiliary that judge the contests. And Tom Scortino, he's a senior vice commander for the Yardley Post, and he and his wife, Jill, are also members of the essay committee. I... Thank you. Thank you. It's been my pleasure to be the chairperson for the essay committee for the last, I guess, six years. And during that time, the students of Maple Point have submitted literally hundreds of essays that have come in to us to be judged. The essay contest is open to middle school-grade students, six through nine. And this year, we had entries from some of the private schools, Council Rock schools, the Pensbury schools. And two of the Maple Point students have won this year, first and second place. So you're going to be hearing some pretty good writing and reading from these two young gentlemen. The contest, we probably, I think this past year, we had 20-plus essays that were submitted. Couple years ago, we had over 100. It goes up and down in hills and valleys. But they've always been good, and it's been very difficult, but very entertaining to read and review all these students' work. And it is work. Good job. They're great. We're going to honor them and their families next week at a dinner, next Wednesday, I believe it is. And so we'll get to hear the essays again. But it's a contest that we take our submissions, and it goes on to district, and it goes on to the state, VFW, and then nationally. And so this contest, there's over 100,000 kids across the United States that enter this essay contest. And we're quite proud of the two gentlemen here, the young gentlemen, for their work that they've done. So with that, thank you very much for your time. Thank you.
The second place winner was Sean Tracky, so he'll come up and read his essay for you now.
Why I Honor the American Flag. I honor the American flag because the flag has stepped up and honored me. When I look at the flag, I see freedom, liberty, independence, and myself. All of these qualities that represent our country are not all that hides behind the flag. I can see pain, war, and a battle for all that we have today. I was once told by a classmate that the American flag represents racism, bigotry, and a terrible president. I was appalled and ashamed. I felt all that my country had stood for was washed away with a few simple words. One point two million American soldiers fought and died for those 13 red stripes and those 50 white stars to glide freely over our heads. While I watch others all the time on social media describe that the flag isn't what represents us, we are what represents us. But that isn't all true. There are 50 stars for all 50 states of the Union, and 13 red and white stripes for all the original colonies. How can you say we aren't represented by Old Glory when our whole country can be seen and represented with each individual star? All the war and bravery, and I still see disrespect to the flag everywhere. Videos pop up showing the Star-Spangled Banner engulfed in a storm of flames for reasons as simple as a different political view. I stand up for the flag to show others what respect is and why it matters so much to so many people of this country. I honor the flag why? To hope one day our nation will see each other as a whole and not a community of hate. Our flag shows who we are. It represents us as a whole and what we should and will stand for in this country. Freedom, liberty, and independence. All words and phrases our founding fathers fought for. The flag that will fly over me and everyone in this country will represent us, bring us together, and even divide us. But those three colors and the beauty she shines behind will always have a place where my home stands free and untouched. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. And our first place winner was Kyle Sullivan.
In June of 1777, the original 13 stars and stripes were constructed to represent the strength and unity of our nation's colonies. Today, there are still 13 stripes for those original colonies, but now 50 stars are woven into the blue to represent the 50 states of America. The American flag signifies to me all of those who are willing to risk and ultimately sacrifice their lives for our freedom. When I see the flag, I think of the bravery that each of those men and women had. Not only are they a symbol of freedom, they are a symbol of loyalty, risking their lives for our nation as a whole. In the late 1800s, a poor, young Polish immigrant named John Roman came to America. He traveled steerage on a ship riding from Poland to Philadelphia, wanting to find work in a land of opportunity and freedom. At the time, Poland was under control of three other countries, so the pursuit of freedom enticed him to America. Once here, he worked as a laborer in a local factory in the Frankfurt section of Philadelphia. He used all the money he had to provide transportation for his siblings who were still in Poland. This man fought in wars, as did his sons and his grandsons, for freedom. This man is my great-great-grandfather. His legacy has been passed down from every generation until me. Today, I enjoy the freedom that this man and countless others have fought for. The struggles, the thought of the struggles that he and many others encountered are overpowering to me. There's been recent controversy in the media surrounding the flag. Many people have chosen to kneel during the National Anthem. Many groups of people are less than happy at these individual choices to kneel, viewing it as a sign of disrespect to the flag. In this great nation, these individuals have the choice to choose whether to stand or kneel. Although I do not know why certain people choose to sit or kneel, I do know that the flag represents that exact option: freedom. In no way should we choose to hate people who make these decisions, even if we disagree. That's what makes this country so great, and why I honor the American flag. And under this flag, we truly are one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
We'd like to recognize the two. The board has a certificate here. One of you young men might know the board president. Share the same last name? Nice job. Congratulations, Kyle. Sean, nice job. Can we get a picture with your teachers and VFW?
We have one other presentation, and this is an exciting one. We are seeing an opportunity this year, throughout the course of this year, to have our schools come forward and highlight some of the exciting things happening. And so this is our third school to come here to the board meetings, and Schweitzer Elementary and Dr. Orlando, welcome.
Good evening. I'm proud to be the principal at Albert Schweitzer Elementary and home of the Schweitzer Lions. There are many points of pride we could share with you tonight. As the building leader, we are working hard to make Schweitzer a warm and welcoming place for students, families, and the community. We are doing this by inviting parents in to volunteer and asking them to be part of our school events. Our PTO also welcomes partnerships and community building through their many activities at our school. We're also working on the physical aspects of the building, such as installing new building signs, getting stencil games painted on the blacktop, and having an artist-in-residence paint a beautiful mural in our school, as Mr. Jones had mentioned. For the 2018-2019 school year, we have four building goals in our professional development plan tied to the district's strategic plan. One of the areas we are excited about highlighting tonight is our one-to-one technology program at Schweitzer. Tonight, we will be showcasing our second-grade coding club, who meets voluntarily every Tuesday morning. You will also hear from third graders, who will share about an online resource we are using for project-based learning through the website, penpalschools.org. I will introduce the staff members that are helping lead these initiatives, but it is really the students that will be the teachers tonight. We hope you enjoy two of our current points of pride at Schweitzer. We'll first start with Mrs., actually, Ms. Garrison, is going to help out introduce Penpalschools with our third graders. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm excited to be here speaking on behalf of Schweitzer's third-grade team. We've been using Penpalschools in our classroom on our students' one-to-one Chromebooks that they have. Penpalschools allows our students to connect with students from 144 countries around the world. Our role as a teacher is to assign the students into different standards-based units that focus primarily on nonfiction comprehension, and they get to complete different activities and watch different videos. Our job as a teacher is to monitor what they're posting and who they're interacting with. We've seen a big shift in their learning. They're taking a more active role, and they're more excited about their learning. I was floored when I had a group of students asked to give up their own recess time to come in to work on their Penpalschools project. So with that brief introduction, we have three third-grade students here tonight who are going to share their excitement about Penpalschools.
Hi, my name is Nathan. Penpalschools is a website that lets you collaborate with other students from all over the world. Penpalschools has different units for learning that are all nonfiction. Each unit has videos and activities that help us learn about different topics. Penpalschools is a way we can use project-based learning in our classrooms. When our teacher assigns us a unit, it is always related to what we are learning in class. For example, we were learning about fables in class. We got to do a unit on fables in Penpalschools where we got to write our own fable. Our teacher assigns us a unit, and once we have completed the activities, we have to post a creative response. Our teacher has to approve our response before we can post it. This is to make sure that we have done our best work and to make sure that we are doing the right thing. Penpalschools really gets us motivated to learn.
Hi, my name is Gillian. My favorite unit in Penpalschools is Fables, Folk Tales, and Mythology. I like folk tales the best. In the folk tales unit, you have to write an original folk tale. Folk tales are short stories that have human and animal characters, sometimes include fantasy and magic. Kind characters are often mistreated. Folk tales help teach community norms and values. In a folk tale, settings are specific to different regions. I connected with my friend Abby. She was the first Penpal I ever got. I'm going to read you my folk tale. Lily. One sunny day, a girl named Emily was at recess. She saw a girl lying on the ground. She looked like she had fallen down on the blacktop. Emily ran over and exclaimed, "What happened? Are you okay? Do you need to go to the nurse?" After that, the girl said, "Why would I want to go to the nurse? It just attracts attention to you. Now go away." Emily walked away sadly. When Emily was walking away, she heard, "Wait, come back!" the girl yelled. "I'm so sorry I said that to you. You can take me to the nurse." When they were walking to the nurse, Emily thought, "She seems like a nice girl." Emily asked the girl what her name was. She said Lily. Lily and Emily became best friends. Moral: Show empathy, and you might make a friend.
Hi, my name is Ava. My favorite thing about Penpalschools is we get to communicate with people all around the world and become best friends. After I posted my original fable during the fable unit, I got a comment from a student in Germany. I'm so excited that someone from Europe read and commented on my work. And now I would like to read you my fable called "The Spaghetti Mess." Once there was a dog named Danny and a reindeer named Roger. They were at home eating spaghetti for dinner. Danny was trailing the spaghetti up on his fork. He was trailing his fork as fast as a spinning top. The spaghetti, some of the spaghetti sauce was flying everywhere. Some of the spaghetti sauce splattered on Roger's head. After trailing his spaghetti, he was slurping it up like a hawk. "Danny!" Roger exclaimed. "You made a mess!" "I will clean it up," Danny said. "I will help you clean it up," Roger replied. "Thank you," Danny said. "Not a problem," Roger answered. Then they went to the lake to wash off. They played in the lake for an hour and forgot all about the spaghetti mishap. Moral: Always use your manners while eating.
I would like to show you a few screens from Penpalschools. These are some of the units that we have been working on in third grade through the program Multiplication and Division, Fables, Folk Tales, and Mythology, and schools around the world. When I click on Folk Tales, it will show you my folk tale. I can also see folk tales created by other students in the unit posted here. When I go back to Fables, we will be able to see Ava's fable and the comment she received on her post.
We need the mic button.
When I go back to Fables, we will be able to see Ava's fable and the comment she receives on her post. You just need to search for her name, and her post will be displayed. If I view previous comments, you will see a reply that she received from a student in Germany. Pretty cool, right? We love learning through Penpalschools.
So the students volunteer to come in every Tuesday morning, and they have about 30 to 40 minutes to work on coding skills. So I brought six students here with me tonight. They have demonstrated great enthusiasm and perseverance in learning coding skills. We started by using the website code.org, where they were taught the basics of the coding programs. They had their first experiences interacting with computers instead of being consumers. So they've been creating their own games and programs. What was really exciting is that learning through code, they have found out that learning through code, that it's rewarding persistence and practice and a willingness to fail until you succeed, which is a really huge life lesson to learn as a second grader. Recently, we've moved on to learning how to program with our Dash robots. So they're learning how to solve problems visually and to experiment with concepts that they're learning inside the classroom. And I want to turn it now over to the students, because they are so excited to share with you what they've learned. And they also want to take the time. We brought our robots here with us tonight, so they want to kind of show you how to program a code through a robot. So I want to invite the second graders up with me, so if you'll come on up. I'm going to step down.
What I most like about the robots is that you can name them, and they do what you want them to do, such as get its lights to turn purple or move forward. All you have to do is code them correctly. I learned that coding is hard, but it's lots of fun.
Hi, my name is Savannah. When I started second grade, I knew nothing about coding, and now I know how to do a lot of cool things with the robots. I learned how to make the robots move and the lights on the robots to change. One challenging thing with the coding robots is figuring out how to fix the problem when you get the coding wrong.
Hi, my name is Logan. I know sometimes your code may be wrong. That's okay. You just have to fix it using a little help from a friend, or you can keep trying. You ask someone for help once you tried really hard and gave it your best. Teamwork is important when writing a code.
Hello, my name is Leland. The robots can do cool things. They can rev around, make noises. Their heads can turn around, and their lights can change colors. You need an iPad and an app, and you need to write a code to do these things. The robots are cool.
Hello. Hello, my name is Conrad. I had never, I had never done coding before until I became a second grader. The coding is very fun. There are two different ways I have learned to code. One is using the website code.org. The second is encoding the robots through the app. We are very happy to share our Dash and Dot robots.
Hello, my name is Noah. Do you know how many future jobs require coding skills? Artists, designers, engineers, scientists, and business analysts all require coding skills. Now, we would like to take the opportunity to show you how to code the robots. Examples of what they can do is making them move around and light up. Each of us will work with two of you to show you different things on the Dash and Dot robots. I will show you how to add attachments to the robots.
I will show you how to make the robots go back and forth.
I will show you how to make the lights on the robots change colors.
I'll show you how the robots dance.
I will also show you how the robots change color.
I will show you how to make sounds.
So if you could pair up with me, and then they'll kind of grab you and give you their one skill.
Yeah.
We're going to dance. We'll be over here dancing.
I'm sorry.
There we go.
Here we go.
There 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 we go.
Artists, designers, engineers, scientists, and business analysts all require coding skills. Now, we would like to take the opportunity to show you how to code the robots. Examples of what they can do is making them move around and light up. Each of us will work with two of you to show you different things on the Dashin'.robots. I will show you how to add attachments to the robots.
I will show you how to make the robots go back and forth.
I will show you how to make the lights on the robots change colors.
I'll show you how the robots dance.
I will also show you how the robots change color.
I will show you how to make sounds.
So our Schweitzer friends, if you could finish up the last thing that you're showing the board member, and then we will wrap it up. Thank you so much, our second graders. Okay, second graders, so if you can bring your robots and your iPads to the back of the room. I just wanted to say thank you to our Schweitzer students for coming and representing us well this evening. Oh wait, our Schweitzer friends, we have some certificates to give out. So if you could hang out for just one moment, Mr. Jones would like to present some certificates.
All right, folks, can you come back up? The young programmers, you did a great job. That was phenomenal. Pen pal people, phenomenal.
That's what we've done over here.
That brings us to the public, first public comment section, session of the meeting. Mrs. Burns, anyone sign up? Okay, if you didn't sign up, you can approach the podium. Okay. Nobody? Okay. Uh, that brings us to the next section, items for approval at the public meeting, which is in two weeks from tonight. Uh, 2.01, school resource officer interagency. 2.02, addendum to the lease. 2.03, overnight trips. 2.04, home instruction. 2.06, bid approvals. Okay, 2.05, out of district plates. Okay, uh, that brings us to committee reports. You want to do, uh, or do you want to do facilities? Business operations, since Mrs. Hollenbach's not here. I'll ask Ms. Markowitz to do it, if she remembers what we did. I don't know.
At our last meeting, we had food service come and present, um, actually give food samples to the board, uh, and talk about the food that's served in the cafeterias. Um, our next meeting is next Wednesday, January 16th, right here at 6:30.
Thank you. Uh, educational development, Mrs. Boyle's not present. Anyone want to give that report that they remember?
Well, the most important thing is that there's an education development committee meeting coming up on the fifteenth, fifteenth. And this January meeting that's coming up on the fifteenth is our opportunity to share with the public and with the board members on that committee, uh, new curricular initiatives for the upcoming school year. So, uh, we're looking forward to having Dr. McGee and, uh, Mrs. Burkholder here, uh, to present for you that evening. So we welcome everyone out that, that night. Thank you.
Facilities and planning. At our last meeting, uh, we got an update on the status of the demographic study, which is being done. And the other thing we talked about was updates to, uh, various buildings regarding security systems. No, no. Policy, Steve, could you give us the update on that?
Uh, we're, uh, in the middle of, uh, still pursuing our, uh, revamping of policies through the PSBA format. Uh, Mr. Mann is our liaison for the administration. Uh, we've already had a first reading of, I believe it's, it's section 100, section 100, and we'll be having a second reading. And then we'll be, uh, pushing those policies along to the board to have them, uh, comment and a, um, vote to accept them, as well as retiring the policies that they may have updated or replaced. Uh, did we set a new policy date yet? Twenty-nine, January 29th, Maple Point, uh, boardroom, 6:30 is where we'll be having our next policy meeting. Thank you.
Just to expand on policy slightly, um, all of the archived policies can still be found on the website. The new policies that we're adopting are on board docs. So if you go to the district's website, you can still find the existing or current policies. You can find the archived policies, but you have to go to board docs for the new policies. So just so that's clear for everyone.
Thank you. Representative reports, um, Ms. Boyle's not here. I don't believe there was an IU board meeting since the last, uh, report that she gave. So we will move to the Shammany Education Foundation. Mr. Feather?
Again, thank you to Chris for a summary. Is she still here? The Sham- the Shammany Education Foundation was pleased to accept a $10,000 donation in December from the Forst Foundation, the charitable foundation of Lincoln Investment. The district has a longstanding client relationship with Lincoln, which is celebrating its 50th anniversary. The money will be used to support the grant and scholarship programs of the NEF. Additionally, I'd like to add, uh, the Alumni Association Gathering, uh, the upcoming Alumni Association Gathering is January 24th at 6:00 PM at the Irish Rover, so your support would be appreciated. The next board meeting of the NEF will be held here at Maple Point next Monday, January 14th at 4:00 PM. Anyone interested in helping with their fundraising and alumni outreach efforts is welcome to attend. And lastly, uh, the NEF 25th anniversary celebrated, i- is being celebrated in conjunction with the district art show on May 21st, 22nd, and 23rd. There will be an alumni table. So if you can and you're an alumni, please visit. And if there's anything you can do to help, it would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. PSBA liaison, Mr. Purtana?
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Um, it's been a, uh, I guess, a, a long enough hiatus for the, uh, holiday season. And the, uh, state has also, uh, been on somewhat of a hiatus. But Governor Wolf will be, uh, giving his appropriations address on Tuesday, uh, February 5th. He'll be presenting the 2019, 2020 state budget proposal. And of course, we always look forward to that to see what ideas and concepts of funding, uh, education in Pennsylvania will be presented. Also, for, uh, board members, uh, the, uh, announcement from the PSBA of Advocacy Day on Monday, April 29th. Um, this year, the PSBA will be partnering with the Pennsylvania Association of Intermediate Units and the Pennsylvania Association of School Administrators to strengthen our advocacy impact. The focus for today will be meetings with legislators to discuss critical issues affecting public education. There's no cost for board members to attend, and you can contact the, uh, PSBA for scheduling appointments with legislators, but you do have to register with them. And the details will be coming soon. You can contact Mr. Jones's office if you, uh, want to attend that Advocacy Day. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Technical school, Mr. Allen?
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Um, the Bucks County Technical High School, uh, joint committee met on December 18th. Um, number of things I wanted to bring to the, uh, attention of the board. Um, in attendance were myself, Ms. Bowman, and Mr. Jones. Mr. Jones, uh, has graciously agreed to be superintendent of record for another year, with his term ending in July. Board president, uh, we had election of new officers for the year. Uh, I am now board president. The first vice president is Joe Adamson from Bristol Borough. And the second vice president is Mr. Christian Schwartz from Pensbury. Um, wanted to just bring, uh, bear with me, because I had to decipher this from legalese, uh, and put it in English. We had a, uh, number, uh, three grants, uh, to act on, uh, Pennsylvania. They all come through the Department of Education, Pennsylvania. Um, we received grant, uh, for $50,000 to be used between December of this year through May of this year. Uh, and that grant goes specifically for equipment in the classroom. Um, we also had, this one took a little bit more explaining, but, um, I thought it was significant. I wanted to bring it to our attention here. Um, there's a, it's called the 21st Century Community Learning Center Cohort Eight Agreement. Now, back in 2016, the tech school entered into an agreement to provide community learning center for academic, artistic, and cultural enrichment opportunities for children. Uh, that agreement has been amended to extend through three additional years, with grants given to defray the cost of that at $399,600 per year. The first year, uh, an additional $74,991 was granted, and that is to provide supplemental service programs and activities to address drug and alcohol prevention or social and emotional programs through 2019. I thought that was significant. And again, all those came through the co- it's an agreement with the tech school and the Commonwealth, uh, that comes through the Department of Education. Uh, also, we, a motion was made to accept the base of 425 students, uh, that will be used to calculate each district's ninth grade allocation for the 2019 through 2020 school year. Um, that brings us theoretically to 95 seats for ninth grade. Um, we will be, um, projected to have 334 seats filled. Um, very close to what we've agreed upon. Uh, gives us a little wiggle, wiggle room for children moving in from other districts. Uh, we're, we're very close to right on the money where we thought we'd be. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. That brings us to the second public comment period. Please approach the podium. Identify your name, where you live, occupation. Any takers? Okay. Anyone have any future topics? Board comment?
I'll go. Uh, I just wanted to, uh, uh, say how much I enjoyed the presentations. Uh, both, uh, those, the middle school kids who, 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 uh, uh, did the, their essays about the flag. I thought they were, I, I wish I could write and express myself that well back when I was in seventh grade. I, God bless them. Um, and then, of course, uh, a- as a STEM educator, uh, I am always, myself, I'm always glad to hear, uh, about the, uh, the STEAM Expo that comes through. STEM STEAM is a, obviously a passion of mine. And, uh, uh, when I think about, when I first got to learn about robots and work with robots, I was a senior in college. Um, my sons, who came up through the district, got to first learn about robotics when they were in third grade. And I was just schooled a little bit earlier by, uh, good old Logan in the second grade, how to make a robot light up, and I was just blown away. I, I wish, I wish I had that. So, um, uh, but they, they said some things that were just really, uh, quite impressive to me, and that was, um, uh, teamwork. Uh, I, I educate students, and teamwork is such a huge thing, uh, because no one can do it all by themselves, especially when technology changes at a blinding pace. Um, and, uh, one has to constantly stand on top of it. Um, and, and just that whole thing about that failure. Um, while failure is an F-word, um, it shouldn't be perceived as an F-word. It's always an opportunity to learn, uh, and to get better. And, uh, and so, uh, that's something I impress upon my students. And then the last thing is that robots are like computers. They are only as smart as the people behind them. So, uh, so again, well done. I was very impressed and, uh, very delighted to see these kids coding at such an early age. Wonderful stuff, so.
You know, as, uh, Mr. Jones spoke at the beginning of the meeting, uh, you know, and I appreciate the, Mr. Jones having us recognize and the public recognizing us. Um, you know, we always talk about the thankless job, but, you know, this is, these meetings, when we have the kids come in, they show us, you know, what they're learning, and they give a presentation like the presentations they gave. That's, 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 that's the payment. You know, that's, that's when all that, you know, late nights away from home, um, putting in those, you know, extra hours, uh, you know, payoff when you see those kids do what they did. I mean, to have those third graders come to the podium, uh, Nathan, Gillian, and Ava, you know, just the way they spoke. If you didn't tell me they were in third grade, you know, I, I would have never, never have believed it. And, and the second graders with, with the robotic skills, I mean, it just, children today, I mean, I was, I mentioned when I came back, I said, I know I wasn't doing that in second grade. I, I don't remember what I was doing, but I, but I think it had something to do with crowns. But, uh, but, uh, but, you know, Emily, what was it, Savannah, Logan, Leland, Conrad, and, and the little gentleman, uh, I was working with, with Mr. Jones, Noah, just, you know, just fantastic. And, and, and what started off today, um, the writing skills of those two eighth graders that spoke at the podium, um, I still can't write, you know, so, you know, it's just phenomenal. Um, and the spirit and thought that they put in there. The spirit and the thought, I guess I opened myself up for that. The, the, the spirit, the spirit and the thought that they, they put into that. And out of all those districts, uh, for those two Maple Point students to be recognized, just, just phenomenal. Uh, that was Sean and Kyle. To our teachers, um, and administrators, excellent job. Um, thank you for making sure that the, the, the children are, are, are getting a modern day education, preparing them, uh, for what the future may hold, and they'll come into this, you know, world, you know, ready to take it on. And that's where the skills start. They start when they're young, and we build on them. So thank you. It was great evening. It's glad to be back. Happy New Year to everybody, and, uh, looking forward to, uh, the same. Thank you all.
Happy New Year, everyone. Glad to see everyone come back to our packed hall. Uh, we appreciate those of you who come, honestly. I, uh, want to add my admiration for, uh, the Schweitzer Lions in the house today. How about that? Um, eh, eh, yeah, I can only say the same thing. I was trying to imagine as, as I was working with young Conrad, uh, Mr. Marrieton and I. Um, I was just fascinated how quickly his hands are moving around. I'm trying to follow along. I'm thinking, I, I still hunt and peck at my laptop to get reports done. Uh, I do not know what I was doing in second grade. I, I, I think I, we were done with nap time and milk and cookies, but we certainly weren't programming robots. And, um, I want to, uh, just blown away by, uh, young Kyle and Sean there with their, uh, the essay, the Patriots pen essay. Um, eh, very heartfelt words. And, and the fact that they, they thought about that, and that's, what a credit to our community, honestly. Um, and when I hear that, uh, how well our children represent our community, I, I feel much better for the future of our community in general, um, that they're well spoken, well educated, and, uh, just a credit, and a credit to the families. Um, I also like to point out that, uh, my sister Bernadette once wrote an essay, won an award for the American Legion, was presented to her, eighth grade, in the Pendletonville Memorial Day Parade, and she has never failed to remind me that I never won an award. So that's something they will always remember. So, um, again, thank you.
Well, as everyone has said, Happy New Year to everyone tonight. And this was actually a very fun meeting tonight. Uh, second and third graders from Schweitzer were, it was fun to get out there and actually hear them speak. Um, and Kyle and Sean, it was great to hear them. Fortunately, Kyle has my wife's speaking ability and not mine, so thank God for that. And, uh, it was just, uh, it was, it was a good night. It was good to see the VFW, the fellows from the VFW come out. And, uh, I think that's, uh, that's all I have. So if, uh, no one else has anything, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.